I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda is the approval. John Mestrich?
Yeah.
Chuck Campbell?
Present.
Bridget Hayes, I'm here.
Earl Moore?
Here.
Curtis Moore?
Here.
We have four more. First is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting and the executive session. The regular meeting is from June 1st. And the executive session is from June 7th. There wasn't an executive session, so the executive session just says... Oh, there wasn't an executive session, I'm sorry. They actually did have this time. So it says, "The persons in the executive session are to receive information about an interview prospective employees." That's it. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes from June 1st and the executive session from June 7th?
I made a motion to accept.
John made a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Earl seconded, all in favor? So, you're opposed? Are you opposed to both of the minutes? Or just one minute?
Just the regular meeting.
Can you tell us why you're opposed? Is there something wrong with the minutes?
Yeah, there were several instances where it said there was a motion made, and then it doesn't say there was a second thing. And my objection is that there was a motion in the second. And if the vote was called, the vote was called a question. And you objected and did not say or did not allow a motion at all.
Which section was that?
Rules of procedure. First page, rules of procedure. So Mr. Ward made a motion to approve resolution. President Hayes objected and said the motion was out of order. My objection is that I made the motion, Chuck made the second, I called the question, and you refused to take it though. Regardless of the minutes passed, so.
Do you want to make a motion for the minutes? I can go right back to the next regular meeting.
There's been a motion to approve, second, and it's passed to the one. So as the board would like to change it to what it actually happened. But I'm just objecting to it because as is presented, it isn't correct.
I wish you would've said something before I called for the vote.
You did vote enough to discuss your motion, it was voted across for.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ward, I made a mistake. I should've called for discussions, just normally, we just approve these pretty easily. I didn't know there was an issue. When Gina sent this out, did you let her know that there was an issue in the email traffic? No? Well, that's unfortunate, but that's okay, though. Would someone like to revoke their motion to... Who made the motion?
I did, Nigel.
You don't want to revoke it? Okay, so motion passed?
I made a motion on my second.
Second.
I made a second, I'm on my fourth. I seconded.
I'm perbing the minutes. I don't exactly remember what exactly happened, so.
Yeah, I believe it was two that happened, twice.
Actually, Chuck did the second because he wasn't here.
I made a second.
A second, yeah.
Well, then he can't retract it? Because he couldn't even vote, but...
What are you talking about? He wasn't here for... I was just...
For the June 1st. He wasn't there.
I was thinking second.
Okay, so motion passed. Boy, I'm not really sure how to handle this.
Neither am I. I don't mind if they amend it. You want to make a new motion to amend it, sorry about that.
John does not want to amend his motion, so we'll have to ask the attorney when they come on board how to fix that, if you can make a note, figure out how to do that. And no objection to the executive session? So first, I'm objecting to the actual minutes. June 1st. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of claims and payroll. So the claims, we have $283,093.54 for the claims. And for payroll, we have $61,924.67. And for overtime, we have $649.75. Did I get a motion to approve the claims and payroll?
I made that motion.
John made a motion to approve claims and payroll. Is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Earl seconded. Is there any discussion about the claims and payroll? Any questions before we move on to a vote? Nothing heard? All in favor? All opposed? Next is, number one is the local historic district map ordinance. And I think we have Faith Pageant that wants to speak first.
Okay. I have 39 signatures here from Cliff Street, I forgot where you put Cliff Street, Warren Avenue, the West 9th and 10th streets. We have never signed or voted inclusion of the West 9th, 10th, 11th streets, along with Cliff, Warren, Avenue, and Town Street, and the historic district. We asked that the town board redraw the patches including these areas. I have 39 property owners to sign off on this. Take a look at me, I was going to go find my houses and I failed. Friends are very lucky, we'll attach yesterday, and so blew it up. Uh, okay. We just, yeah, I'm fairly ready for the next round. We just, we just told them we need a... I bought my house in 1980, I don't know if it was earlier. We work in this for a district, we don't want being this for a district. We don't want a group, even those who voted for, we don't want a group of people to tell us what our house can look like, what kind of siding we can have, or what we're going with, all those different things. We do not want this. So there's 39 of us that are property owners in the area that are against this. And we are your constituents. And we are asked to do, to redraw the back and I ordered my way to go.
So are you saying you just went from Main Street up to 10th?
Yes, we were fine with Main Street, we were fine with that. And we thought after the meeting before last, that when you said the whole town was empty, we thought it was a done deal. So until I started hearing rumors and stuff, then I went and talked to my neighbors, and they just don't want this. Oh, we're not a fellow, do I know that? The majority do not. And I have copies here of the petition for you.
So you have 39 that are against it. How many houses total are there?
I think there's 46 total houses, and two of them are vacant, and then there's four or five that are rentals. And then, of course, his is up for sale. And so I didn't get all those people. And then I know for sure that obviously my neighbor, Toya, is for it. I know she is because we talked about it. And I know that Jennifer English is for it because we talked about it. But I never could get a hold of, I never got a hold of another people like her or who else. I don't know who else is for it. But I know that the majority of us are not because we outnumber what's left. So we just, we just don't want to be a part of it. You know, we're fine with Main Street, I love the way people are working on Main Street. We like that. But we want our houses, we take care of our houses, and we own our houses the way we want our houses. We have people who want to put new roofs on it, they don't want to ask your permission or a group of people that are in charge of the historic district, a permission to put on whatever roof. I mean, I had a slain roof years ago. I couldn't find anybody to even work on it. I don't have it anymore, but I developed my remodeling before this came about. But that's not true with every model. So for those 39 people, it's fine, that's who I speak for, we do not want it.
Thank you for being such a concerned citizen and getting out there and talking to your neighbors, I really appreciate that involvement. And I hope you feel better.
I will, thanks.
Does anyone have any comments on her presentation or questions?
I just want to say, it's an exercise in futility, but people can opt into the historic district. People cannot opt out. Once we vote people in, separate, whether they want to be or not. But the people that aren't in it, they can opt in and unpack. We told the commission what we were going to say. They came back twice with different messes. And not one of the commission members either showed up to talk to us about why they changed the map. I'm against, biggest, to help that.
I tend to agree with you, John. I know that at the last meeting, I voted for the map because I had no idea there was opposition. I thought that it was, I just, I didn't know there was opposition. Now that I do know there's opposition to that extra, extra few blocks, I too question whether the preservation commission isn't here to kind of explain why they made those decisions. And so I want to honor the work and the residents that are there that say they don't want to be in it. I do know that the Historic Preservation Commission can always add more districts later. That's kind of what their job is, and that's what they do as they convince people in the town that it's a good thing. And that's what I hope that they are able to do over time. Because I like the idea of the historic district in general. So that's just my two cents. Did you want to say something, John?
Yeah, so I have a question for John. If you were ongoing to put a roof on our house right now without the Historic Commission, what process would we use?
We just put on a roof, we got to get permitted. But whatever, we get a roof.
We get a permit.
But we don't ask anybody's permission.
True. If we want to add a shed, we got to get permission.
We just plant flowers at my house. We're asking by his permission to plant those flowers. But by passing this...
The historic society will...
Yes, you have to ask permission before you plant flowers. Do you have the right kind of flowers on it? Probably the right color.
That's the same way I'm not doing it, maybe.
Well, you see, I'm bloodthirsty. I mean, that's why, one of the reasons I'm against them.
One of the main reasons.
Larry Rosenberg could have took his trees down, but he did it wrong. He's been a retired businessman here, he's been a good citizen here. If we were part of the historic district, he would've had to pay $25 to go into people that don't live anywhere near him and ask if he could cut his trees down. I think that's terrible.
Well, that happens all the time.
No, but that's...
Sure he does.
People don't ask permission to cut their trees.
If you want to do things with your property, you have to get okayed from your neighbors. The community will acknowledge you.
If I also kept one of my trees, I'd get okayed for that.
That is just one reason. So I'm talking about overall, people are saying that they can't do that. They can't do anything with the property without the historic.
I put in windows, I didn't notice things, and I wouldn't care anymore. But I put in windows, they're fine windows, they're windows I can afford, they would've never passed the historic district because of the frames. But you can't tell what kind of frames they are unless you get right up to them. And if you do that, I'm gonna have you for trespass.
Has anybody denied anything yet for the Historic Preservation Commission?
He had to pay extra money because of it. And he said that, out of he...
It was approved with... Can you turn your mic on? It was approved with conditions, and the conditions were the windows. They came back, had a conversation, it was approved.
And we encourage you to add the extra money.
We had to do a smart side, add a minimum set of final. The one we built on Town Street, we were due again, and we used vinyl, Samuel would be able to, two blocks up the road. We were told we had to do LLC, and we had to find it to get vinyl windows for it.
How much money is the tax pair responsible for if we deny this in Kappa, I'm saying in all the quarters? How much money is the tax pair responsible for?
Didn't they say last meeting that they can extend the period, deadline period?
You're talking about Oprah?
Are you talking about not the preserving Main Street? Grant?
Two and a half.
I don't think we're there yet. I mean, we have until the 30th of June. We still have time to approve the ordinance.
You mean before, so they should do it?
If we can get a warrant together for a special meeting, I think so, yeah.
We have to have two meetings in the preserve for the HPC, we have to present a map, that would be free of the system.
We can ask them to have a special meeting as well. I mean, I think, I mean, it's only the 4th street, the 15th, I think.
And when we give a new authority, by reading what the law is, we can put our own map out there. Nowhere in the law does it say we cannot do it. And I understand you, as long as you're told, as long as you're not told you can't do it, you can do it. So if we got to stand twice to do what we want to have done, let's make our own map and build it.
I agree with you. Most of the conditions or things that you got to see approved are awful. And I've been saying that since we found out that this was all part of it, because it wasn't what, wasn't what they expected us to be approved of this. I think we all try to put that, my concern would be paying back the grant. And I would rather, I'd rather not wager in the next 15 days we get this approved and have to pay back $100,000 grant, or at least we'll be extended out of any of these opportunities. I would rather than fix the standards and approve the map than not approve the map and use money, that's just what I want.
That would be really nice, but Eric, since they showed so far, but not even showed up and explained what it would differ on what we ask. Can we go there? I don't think we're going to be anything like that.
That's why I push back when we approve the contract with Indiana landmarks initially this year, because if given this information, it turned out to be incorrect. And we use that, and now he's not showing up to defend it, or answer questions to us what we can't do. I agree with you, the standards need to be changed, and if we start days on Indiana landmarks, then Black Luster has to go there and the contract will be approved over this year. You know, I agree with your question that. Jeff, is there good advice for the HPC members here? And none of them showed up? Well, it's...
I agree with you on that. They're not going to work with us, and if they're going to make a, I don't know, decisions on what we can, I don't know, probably all the time. I don't want to tell them what kind of siding I'm putting in my house. And I probably listen to them, big bad eyes. It is, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to work with them at all.
But now they show up, they're like a workhorse.
So it doesn't look like we're going to be able to work with them.
And we can put the blame back on them if they're paying their tax on the leads.
Isn't the grant just Main Street?
It is, but the entire town is in town with tax on it and everything with that, so.
I really think that...
You don't care if Main Street's on, you just don't want to take argument with it.
I don't think we need to talk about repaying the loan because we have two weeks. I mean, if we can come together as a council and come up with a map, and hopefully have a lawyer on track, and just have one special meeting, we can unanimously vote to revoke the rules and read the ordinance, the first reading and the second reading, all in one meeting, and we can approve it. It literally takes one meeting, before the 30th. And I, I'm sorry, I think that we definitely have time to fix this without talking about blowing up the preserving Main Street grant.
Can we table this conversation since it's a second reading? Push a second reading back? And then request, request then condense the map? And then we can suspend the rules, and then vote to not approve this particular one? I don't want to, let's play devil's advocate for a second here, and say, we request that they do this, we find out the attorney said no, we actually have to go through that, they have to present it, and we have to approve it. And it's a little bit more than Main Street, but you said vocally often, and I believe you, that you're voting against any sort of map. So if we suspend the rules, and there's a portion of it that's not going to be in John's, you know, what he's thinking of, he's not going to vote to suspend the rules, I'm correct on that.
I lost, Curtis.
What I think we should do is table the second reading until the next special meeting. Request, send a request back to HPC that they get a call, they're going to have all special meetings, maybe request that they call joint.
Well, actually, to say is the regular standard.
It's the regular?
Yes.
Could we say they are needing to be, to be the map, or no?
I mean, literally, I think if we just table this, I like your idea to table this, and that's all we have to do, because we are going to vote on our lawyer tonight, so hopefully, once that happens, we can engage him first thing tomorrow morning and say, this is what our plan is, we want to have the HPC redraw the map, we want to have a special meeting, suspend the rules, have the first and second readings, and approve it all before the 30th of June.
And they go, oh, the map is back.
Can we draw ourselves?
Yes.
I mean, we can literally ask them this tomorrow morning, if this is, if this is agreed.
I'll make a motion to table the second reading, the ordinance number, whatever it is.
2023-6?
Yes.
I second that.
Curtis made a motion to table the local historic district map ordinance 2023-6. John seconded, is there any more discussion? I'm sorry, did you want to comment before?
Is it too late? Since then, you're like... I, I was, I'm sorry, I went out of the loop, I was not aware until I talked to this pageant tonight, right here, I came for another subject. It's just ruthless, or whatever that word is, to tell me, that I have to fix my house up if you're not going to help me fund it. I'm a single woman, I haven't done one, I've been ill since last Thanksgiving. I'm straddling water, I'm bar wanting out to live. And you're going to tell me, you're opposing, you're going to tell me I've got a certain window, or a certain whatever? When, well, I mean, that's what this historical thing is saying, right? Am I getting it right?
Well, we're taken away, actually, so we can...
Yeah, so I hear, I'll be like, oh my God, you know, how am I going to afford this? You're going to tell me I have to do something that I have no money to do it with? If I could afford windows, I would have to now, I need windows. But I can't even afford hardly my bases. And I, you know, I'm, I, what is that? I mean, this would boom right in my face. And I don't see, I have no one in this room, but what's someone else telling me how to care if they're wrong? I mean, if it's rined down and, and granted, I got to get up one of my yard, but I do try to do what I can do as a single woman from without my child. You know, and I can't, that's all I can do, you can't get a lead up from Terrence, I wish I could. But I can't. And you know, I have business for 22 years, it's in doubt. I love my town, like, I wouldn't give up my town for nothing. I love what's going on on Main Street, like, we agree, everybody loves that. Boy, come here and tell me that your home is not up to standards, fix it. Okay, I'll fix it to your standards, give me the money, is what I would say, because I don't want it. And that's just my peaceful.
Thank you, Bridget. I'm Nancy, the Secretary for Main Street Brookville. And John, I think I have an answer to your question, unfortunately, you need to see the county really counsel. But probably about four weeks ago, I talked with the alum who worked with the National Trust of Historic Preservation. She used to work with them, now she is in, with Kentucky, with Main Street America. Anyway, other states with the Historic Preservation Commission, the other states, is the Historic Preservation Commission that designates the local historic district and what they establish with historic district, that is what is accepted. The town or city council will now look at it. In Indiana, in the guidelines that we, the Historic Preservation Ordinance that was signed on December 28th of 2021, where those guidelines state is the process is this, the Historic Preservation Commission, our case, the local Historic Preservation Commission, they recommend the local historic district. And then from there, they present it to the Brooklyn Town Council for approval as the local historic district ordinance. So that's, that's the process, as stated in the guideline, when I'm not in terms, you recommend the local council, legal council, on that. So the other part that I wanted to share with you all is I've been with Main Street Brookville since 2015. And I've worked very closely with the Office of Community and Rural Affairs since 2018. I've got a building, and they are, you cannot find a better, a better group to support a town, a rural town as ours. Our Lieutenant Governor and Oprah very much are huge cheerleaders and champions for our town, as you all know. And from the get-go, it's Main Street Brookville that, on the history sort of life of the Crusader Main Street grant, and we did. And we were, it was great collaboration in the whole town. And we were awarded the grant. So there have been thousands of hours of investment in this, there have been many, many people that have been involved in this, all the way from Lieutenant Governor, you know, and government chair, to our position. And the savings there in sales investors in our town, they are investing too many dollars because they know that once the wall is rolling, that the town truly is, that economic revitalization starts happening. And so with the preserving Main Street, I appreciate Bridget's position and I haven't heard else, but yes, we definitely have enough time to go ahead and give the local historic district map in a way that the Brooklyn Town Council accepts. In talking with the people at Historic Preservation Commission, they very much understand the, you know, with the gravity of the, what the approval of the local historic district ordinance means, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Nancy, I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry?
No, that's possible, we can...
Yes, sir.
So you said that they don't understand. Why aren't they working with us on that?
Well, you know, on that aspect, that I don't want to speak for them on that, I just want to share with you that I, I know that they understand the importance and the esteem of things of having a local historic district ordinance passed by the Brooklyn Town Council.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to table it? Motion passed, so the historic district will be tabled. Next on the unfinished business is the Johnson &amp; Morgan contract, but I, I mean, I personally would just like to table that again until we get a lawyer on board. Is that an agreement? Okay. Next is the engineering contract for the State 101 second bid, and we don't have that yet, but we did talk to our QAW today, and I think he's going to be able to have that for us at the next meeting. So next is the placement of the old security camera plan. Do you guys have anything on that?
I know, I have, I mean, I have a quote from, I was just looking at it, it's from March.
No, no, this is, this is what we're going to do with the cameras on the police department building, if, we're going to place them somewhere else within the town resources.
Oh, no, sorry, I didn't know if we were going to do that, I didn't get it.
Okay, so we'll just move that to the next meeting. Next is the Rules of Procedure Resolution 2023-3. So before you guys start... So before you guys start, I was wondering if possibly, um, somebody would revoke the motion from, I guess it was a month ago meeting, um, because the motion from a month ago was to amend the rules of procedure that the roles of president and vice president terms are limited to six months with a vote of no confidence as president. And the vice president assumes the role as president and council appoints new vice president by majority. That was the motion. But the actual, um, proposed change is, oh, the actual proposed change doesn't say anything about a vote of no confidence. It does talk about the limit of six months, but the new change doesn't say anything about a vote of no confidence as the president. And then it also doesn't say anything about how the vice president would just assume the role and that we would vote for the vice president. It actually says, um, the president and vice president shall be elected at the first regular meeting held each year and will serve in their roles for a six-month term to expire on June thirtieth of the same year. Prior to June thirtieth, the council shall elect, shall elect the president and vice president for the remaining half of the calendar year, July first to December thirty-first. So that is not what we voted on, but yet that is what's in the Rules of Procedure. So I would just ask those that voted to approve this, or that are in favor of this, to revoke that original motion on May fourth before we proceed talking about this.
So when was the first one read? When was that?
The, the one about the vote of no confidence and the vice president assumes the role as president, that was done on May fourth.
So what?
When I was accused of a hostile remark.
On June first, or the meeting was brought up again, what was said then?
So on June first is when Curtis passed this particular resolution out, uh, for the first time. And it said, these, these new, this new verbiage about, um, voting for the president and vice president for the second half of the calendar year has said nothing about the vice president assuming the role. It says nothing about, um, taking a vote of no confidence for the president. So I just, this is just administrative, really. I just want to make sure that we're kind of following administratively. We made a motion, but we're not going to vote on that same motion now. We're actually, I, I believe this would be like a new motion with the verbiage.
So that'd be amended, amended, approved? Is that what happened, we consider, Bridget, amended?
No, no, I'm, I'm saying that the motion that you guys all voted for on May fourth is actually not reflected in this document that's, that's before us today.
Would that be why this is amended at the top of the page?
No, it says amended at the top of the page because you made this motion on May fourth. But this motion on May fourth is not what's reflected in this piece of paper.
So in this piece of paper, what I'm saying is, yes, they are not the same. Because could this possibly be the amended version?
Sure, you can totally make that motion, but I think we need to revoke this one from May fourth first. And then you can make a vote this motion, and then we can vote, absolutely, one hundred percent.
Oh, a motion to revoke the motion in May, as I was on May the fourth, um, as you read from the word from the minutes, um, and would replace it with the Resolution twenty twenty-three dash three. As you, as you write, or as you like, but I actually wrote it secondly.
If, if, would you want if we just revoked it first so it's a little cleaner for, for people to understand? Can we just, I'm not, I'm not trying to trick anybody. I just, can we just revoke this one first, and then you guys can make a motion on the second one? So that it's just a little cleaner to understand without a comment.
It's pretty simple, a part of the, part of all of that was that we have written out the advice of attorney, which we did. And, uh, the reason it changed because the attorney was, uh, wrote that the vice president put on that decision to evolve the term until limited to six months. That has had to be a new vote for both the president and vice president, compared to that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that.
It was still, it was still the advice of the attorney.
Did you get that, John?
No.
I'm sorry, Curtis, is.
I believe Mr. Moore asked the attorney to direct.
I asked Lynn myself, and she told me.
Right, but that, that attorney, is it possible that that was a verbal conversation then?
No, it's me, no, I just didn't write it down right here.
Oh, it would be really great if, if we could see that. That's just me, I would, you know, if the attorney's going to give advice, he should really give it to all of us at the same time so we kind of all can know, know what they said.
And it follows back too, that if any of us contact any town employees or apartment heads, it should go through, everyone should be seen, see that's on this council. And that's not been happening.
Can we just, can we just stick to this motion for a minute?
No, I just feel quite vulnerable.
I'll make a motion to revoke the motion in on May fourth.
Curtis made a motion to revoke, to amend the rules of procedure that limits the president and vice president to six months with a vote of no confidence as president and with the vice president assuming the role as president and council appointing the new vice president by majority. Is there a second?
A second.
Chuck seconded, is there any discussion about this revocation? Um, all in favor? John? Uh, okay, so four to one, John, uh, all, all opposed? Thank you, John opposed, so motion passed to revoke the, um, motion from May fourth. Thank you.
I just wanted, I think all of us, Joe, so I just want to put it in there.
Thank you. Okay, now, on to the amended rules that is, is sitting in front of us, which means the vice president will not automatically take over. We would vote again for the president and vice president every six months. Go ahead, do you want to make your motion now?
Yeah, I made a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash three, that it rules procedure, Brooklyn Town Council, Brooklyn here, um, to, to amend following officers of the town council, president, vice president, however you like, who serve regularly of each year, will serve their roles for six months term to expire on June thirty of the same year. Friday, June thirty, the council shall have the president, vice president, remaining half of the calendar year, July first to December thirty-first.
Can I ask a question?
Can you just?
That does not mean that the current vice president and president will not be reelected to, to finish out the year. Let's just give them an opening. Just put the year up.
I believe I, I, that's what I read.
Yeah, there's a meaning.
Is there a second for Curtis's motion?
Yeah, I already seconded.
Oh, Chuck seconded, um, now there's discussion. Uh, so what I, um, passed out to some of you, I didn't make a whole lot of copies, I just wanted to make sure that everybody had it. We have this thing, um, in the town, it's a distribution list of other, um, council members across the state of Indiana. And so we are allowed to, a lot of people ask questions. And then other towns and other cities that are more experienced than us answer it. And sometimes we share ordinances and resolutions and just ways to solve different problems, all kinds of stuff. Um, so what I did is I sent an email out to that group email all across the state of Indiana. And these nine people responded, um, to my question about limiting the, um, roles of the president to six months. And so, um, they're basically all of them said around the same thing, is that, no, we don't do that. Why would you do that? Um, we do this annually, um, we don't do it, you never heard of it, personally, I don't like it, is what someone else said, not interested in doing that.
Was this in the email, Bridget?
I can share all these emails with you, I just copied and pasted what they sent back.
So, so the whole council did not receive this back, just you?
Yeah, I was the one asking, you know? So, um, one of the, one of these people said, the state board accounts told our town clerk treasurer that they found upon that procedure, the state board accounts wants continuity and signatures for at least one year. I couldn't find any statute that prohibited changing presidents in the middle of the year, but my town was advised not to do it. Uh, I just want to share that information so that everybody kind of knew that other, other people in other towns don't do this.
Yeah, I wrote an email that all of us got from the attorney. She said, don't do it.
She didn't want to say it on there.
Yes.
She didn't, she said she did not recommend it. She did not come out and say it was illegal. When you talk to an attorney, attorney will tell you whether something is against the law or if it's legal.
Don't recommend it from a attorney is the same thing as don't do.
It's not breaking the law.
No, it's not breaking the law. She said she recommended it, and it was an email that all of us got, not just one person.
I saw that, and I took that with a grain of salt, come.
Does anybody have any other comments from the poll? If you can, sorry, I didn't monitor, buddy, if you can keep it to two minutes, I mean, super long.
There, there's no rest game on, not tonight.
My name is Carol Lassner. I've been here at least once for some reason or another. Um, you guys are elected, right? From the people?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I, I mean, so the last town board, there's all kinds of stuff that happened, and they didn't do this. And now there's some controversy, and so now you guys are going down this town board. And I think maybe the people ought to be able to, um, decide. I, I mean, I, I know, it's not logical, I think that, but.
It's, it's, it's in our state law, it's the council decides who the president is and what the rules are.
But if the people aren't agreeing, and you guys were elected, and the last town board was a, sorry, it just was, okay? I, yeah, I'm just sitting here thinking, and you're talking, what is the purpose of this? I, I'd rather get somebody out if you don't like him at the end of the six months and get somebody else in. I understand that, but you're all going to have, um, disagreements. You're all, you're all just different personalities, none of you guys are going to agree on things. But that doesn't mean that you just out somebody because we should have done that two years ago or a year ago, why are we doing it now? I, I just, maybe people, maybe the people have a right to say something.
The people deserve to hear our voices. Let me make that perfectly clear. We are all elected officials up here. And for someone to sit up here and try to shut me up and tell me I'm on the border, that is out of order.
But that is.
My constituents do not get to hear my voice, and that is completely unlawful.
I understand, but this, this, this agreement.
Tell us, who's offended, why?
Then it's a disagreement between you guys.
Watch, watch the show.
Well, this is a disagreement.
It's a show for fraud.
Yeah.
It's a joke, a joke.
It's, it's not, I mean, you, you know, this, I mean, this is why.
Oh, no way, no way, you talk to him that way.
He can't talk to me that way.
You be quiet, we have a voice to do it for. I will, because you're online, I don't care who you are.
No, I don't.
Yes, you are.
Somebody goes to.
I've got to comment, Sam, because now you have none. I'm calling you out, too. You don't deserve to have that.
Excuse me, excuse me. It is. Could we have a little, excuse me?
Do your job.
Chuck Campbell and his many people, can you guys, can you guys please? Can you please have a little order and decorum and professionalism and respect for each other? Please just don't person talk at a time.
Yes.
Go on, man, you have two minutes.
I never saw anything so ridiculous in my whole.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Not used to it. I've got a very busy day. I'm not, ridiculous, I'm, I'm, to you right now, you're being ridiculous. What, what do you want, somebody to do? Leading you to a week, I told you, and I don't lie, you guys are not honest. And it takes no sense to run things. And it's not all me, you, which is why you and everyone else is, you got to think of the whole town and you do your best then. We're not have you, how you are representing us. So we have a voice too. And don't keep telling me anything, and don't you tell me not to say my piece, because I have these. I have a voice, and you will hear it. You don't have to regret it, and I don't care. But you will hear us as well as we have, listen to your little breath.
You have a voice to me, it's a problem.
I have, I have every word.
Shut up the last two meetings.
Excuse me?
We gathered and said, told.
Who did you say shut up to, or is it better than me?
Pardon, pardon?
What, was this not shut up? Because she said it again, we have a fight.
I was out of order.
The motion was out of order, yes.
Not you, not a gathering, so it's not really amended for us. And that is our fault.
That's what I'm hearing right now. You and I, we get an angle, and I can go along now, you're being right, so am I.
I'm scared.
I don't care, you have a whole audience here, totally agree with me, I'm sure we can.
I'm, I'm here to be.
Don't you talk to me, it's not your fault.
Thank you.
I don't bring it, I don't speak, I work for me, I work for myself.
Is there an officer? I want to say, I, I, my, yes, my, you can. Art? Yes, ma'am. I'm Julia Teschler, I'm a taxpaying citizen. I have one of the oldest houses that I'm concerned about.
Miss Teschler, can you?
Anyone says that, oh, it's all going to go Main Street, I see red. We are all citizens of Brookville. This was what you sent out representing the board of the historic district. You can't make it smaller. You already advertised it, so that's what you should do. You should have had your, uh, where, where did you get that rule you were reading? What was adopted?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
He, Kurt, Curtis, what was adopted from which you were reading?
It was the ordinance.
What ordinance?
It's the ordinance that pertains to this. And Julie?
Who gave it to you?
If you want your property in.
Yes, you betcha.
You can do.
Okay, but don't make it about Main Street. Every one of the houses in Brookville has a history, and it is all led up to what Brookville is today. Frankly, only if you have enough points of, uh, laws, rules of order, you shouldn't read anything that your people don't know about.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your body.
Are there, are there any more comments about the Rules of Procedure Resolution as, as read?
I decided to say that this is preposterous from the start. I mean, uh, if somebody wants to be president, it's not president now. It's great people that do not like a woman being in power. It's not going to help the people of the community in any way. We have so many problems in Brookville that we should address, and this is not one. Uh, we've spent a few time and energy on this, and we shouldn't be on December thirty-first with y'all. If you want to be that president, you can be that president through an election. We don't have to do this now. The lawyers recommended that we not do it.
And I would like to also say that although Curtis did send this amended rules of procedure to our lawyer this morning, um, she is out of the net because she's sick, as I previously explained. And she did not comment on this particular resolution. So I don't think that we have any legal review of this particular resolution at all.
Should that be a concern? Where it is, a, um, a section of our original rules of agreement, instead of talking to the state ball, and the event the conference arrives, we need to rules of procedure, Indian code, Indian code, so, so. In the event that this does, so it is Indian code, Indian code, so it sees this. So if you're concerned with legality of it, that's already addressed in this. I would like to comment on John's allegation that this is, uh, based upon, um, steps of the fiduciary officer. Uh, I think that did it to us, and we're presumptuous, and I'd like to, uh, jettison that. I do not care that she is a woman, I do not care, um, for the president is a male. I do care on how they treat the, the co-council members and how they treat our employees, which is what the initiation of this, um, resolution, the resolution I'm arguing for.
Yes, if we had a problem with a woman, we would have never elected her president to begin with. Except if we had a problem with a woman being the president, we would have never elected her, nominated her as an electorate to begin with. Except if we had a problem with a woman being the president, we would have never elected her, nominated her, and elected her to begin with.
My opinion is, being a male or female has nothing to do whatsoever.
Exactly.
Does. But what the actions they might do or not do for the town employees, et cetera. I know some things, getting investigated right now, I cannot say further, but better come out in the end.
So there has been a motion and a second on the floor. Is any more discussion?
Can I just say some more questions? It's just, where are the town police that are causing this?
Actually, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, you've already been up twice.
I just, no, it's not me, I'm sorry.
Oh, you've jumped in twice, I'm sorry.
One's on, two's on.
Oh, you can get off at once.
I just wanna know where are the other town, where are the other town people?
I have no problem with saying that, I'm not even speaking. Under the last two meetings, they carry the wording on our president's partners. But if you won't speak, go ahead.
All the answer to that question is that there's an investigation happening right now that's interviewing all the employees for hostile work environment. And quickly those results will be, I mean, I'm gonna be interviewed tomorrow, so I'm not sure how quickly those results will be out, but I don't know if we, I'm not even sure if we can make them public, but.
I just didn't know if it was because of the center here or if it was something else happening.
This is, these are allegations against me and that's why I'm changing these rules is because of the allegations, so there's. Anyway, if there's any more discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, so this, what's today, the 15th? Day of June? So that was three I, I don't understand how to, can we just, I'm not sure how to sign this, Gina. It says I's and names on the left and then all of our signatures down, I don't, I just put three to two and everybody signs it? Okay?
Why do we sign it if we're against?
Because there's a little spot over here that says I's and names.
Uh huh.
So I put three I's and two names. And then I guess we just sign it. Again, our lawyer hasn't looked at this, so we're just gonna go with the flow. Thank you, John.
Which we have.
We're investigating, we're closing before we investigate.
Next is department head terms. Next is department head terms, Earl, did you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, I had a motion to extend the department heads' terms of service. We call all towns in Brookville, Indiana, pay full-time department heads. Motion is to extend all department heads' terms of service to December 31st, 2024. As of today's date, Thursday, June 25th, 2023, for the start of the very next pay period, instead of waiting until December 23rd, 23th. And I do have a list of names in the files.
Nice, yes, thank you. So this list says Jess Hansel, Tim Ripberger, Terry Mitchum, Brett Reilly, Dwight Flashpour. He's not a department head, I don't think, he's a main operator. Are we now saying that he's a department head?
I don't know. I was going by the list that I have.
What department is he the head of? Because I think we have Tim as the head of his department. And in terms of Andy, Water Works main operator, also Tim is the head of that department, I would think. Would you be willing to exclude those two?
They'll make it big team with us, I just don't mind the list that I was sent.
Would you be willing to delete those two?
Yeah.
And then next is Brett Bradley, golf course superintendent and monitoring the golf course clubhouse manager. So those are, those two are department heads also, is. I thought that Jess was their department head. They are supervisors, but I just assumed that because they report to Jess, that Jess is the department head.
I have for the list of names, this is what I got in their position, so if it's not the department head, well.
I would consider those two department heads, either top of the portfolio, they have. It's just structure, Jess is special projects director, I would see a special project, also golf course, so I'm not sure if you're using that, but Jess would be on to other special projects.
But, I mean, they can't share the same department, they're gonna share the golf course?
One is the groundskeeper, the management is the personnel, the clubhouse, and the other is tracks, two little different things, very wrong.
No, it's two jobs, yes, but I'm talking about the department has usually just one person in charge of the department, the whole department.
The department will be groundskeeper and operations, it's no different than a CEO and CFO. One's the executive officer, the receiving personnel, one does chief funding.
I would assume that if the golf course is its own department, that we would have someone over the golf course.
I think Earl can take over, if he wants to, he can ask him to, and then Earl can want people on there that make the motion, or second, or create an option.
Is there one Brett or Ronald that's in charge over the other?
No.
This is all the golf course.
They're equally, they both report to Jess equally.
They're both appointed.
And they're both appointed, correct, so thank you.
We don't. I would like to get clarification on all those appointments, that's something I'd like to talk to our lawyer also, that we kinda know what we're supposed to be doing. I think the appointments that we did were because of. History, they just kept appointing and kept appointing, but I don't know exactly which ones we're supposed to or we have to. It's, I mean, according to Lynn, if you remember what she said to us about extending the department head, she said it's basically, extending the terms is meaningless. And it has the unintended effect of lulling department heads into a false sense of security and puts the board in an uncomfortable position. Of having to explain why it potentially acted in a manner contrary to law.
Well, it's not just on law, it's every year, December 31st, they have the word, do I have a job, January 1st?
That's not true, we.
It is true, but then they're not gonna reappoint you, no.
Right, but, I mean, the state of Indiana, we can't.
If we do it now, until January, December 31st of 2024, this year, December 31st, they won't have that word.
That's not true, Earl, the town can separate a relationship with an employee throughout the years, what's that called, it's not the right to work, but it's. Is it the right to work? It's in our legal handbook that we can separate the relationship at any time, between employee and the same employee of the town.
But then when they do that, there is a big process.
No, there isn't, not really, except for Chief Mitchum. He's the only person that's protected by this department, everybody else falls under the.
At will. But at will, sure, correct, okay.
At will appointment, okay, thank you, yeah, that, yeah, this would actually only be affecting Chief Mitchum.
Well, I'm asking the board to, I'm making a motion to out-pass, except for the exception of Dwight Flashpour and Andy Simon to make this motion, make this motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm currently in motion to extend the terms of service for Jess Hansel, Tim Ripberger, Terry Mitchum, Brett Reilly, Brett Bradley, and Lon Brooney. Until December 31st of 2024, Curtis seconded, is there any more discussion?
Yes, I just want to say again, we have problems, serious problems in Brookville, we have empty storefronts, we have all kinds of problems. This is not a problem, this is again, we spent time interviewing something that's stupid. As been explained, our attorney said, don't do this. Everybody except Terry is an at-will employee. Now, we have no town council of course for us to come peddle yourself here and just ask people, who we have? For our own neighbors. This is just stupid.
I feel that this unduly protects Chief Mitchum. You know, call a spade a spade here, this is only protecting him so that at the first of the year, if this council does not want to reappoint him. What Earl's trying to do is protect his job and I think that's pretty clear to everybody. I just don't think it's right and I think that he should, we should continue with the rights of this council and appoint him and all of our department heads at the beginning of the year.
I would make a comment on that.
You have two minutes.
I always have two minutes for a lesson, but the point of this, if you bring up my name about this. I wish you'd keep my name out of this, I've went through enough over the last two years, I don't need that. As far as saying that you want to reappoint the. Heads or whoever are appointed, if the people that work in this community, we all know each other, it's not like it's something, it's a secret. This has been going on for the last four meetings, five meetings, I think it is, and we last for three hours. We last for three hours is because the undue business, unfinished business that keeps coming up. The problem with that is, you guys all have opinions. And if you want to put something to a vote, that's why there's five people in here. I think this is where we fall short, all of us, because they have a right to vote, they all have a right to put something in a motion. And if you dislike it, you have a right for the discussion and you make that discussion. If people don't like what you say, or it doesn't give you a right to dictate other people's vote. Because you dislike what they're saying, it doesn't mean that you have to get nasty about it. That's why you're voting for it. So if there's three of you want it, or two of you don't want it, or one of you want it, or four of you don't, that's why there's a vote, that's how this is set up. I understand the arguments, I understand, I think he would like to know that he has a job till the end of 2024, I know I would.
But Terry, I'm sure that doesn't give him a job till 2024, it gives you a job till 2024, it does give you.
Why does it matter, John, you just said, it doesn't really matter, but.
That's my whole point, Terry, it doesn't matter, except to you.
So.
Nobody else.
So, to turn this in about me?
Well, it is, Terry, but because.
How is it about me?
You're the only one who thinks.
Okay, but explain that, why is the argument, why is the argument because it's about Terry?
Because you're the only employee that is a fact. He, this does nothing for you, it does nothing for every other employee we have, it does nothing for Jess, it does you.
Okay, so why are you having appointments for anybody in town other than the chief of police?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking the lawyer, because I don't see that in a law.
Because even that, what you're saying, that work, that goes day, you're not gonna fire, you're not gonna fire anybody, you're not just, so there is a big process. That you just don't know when to say, you know what, John, I don't like today, I'm going to fire you because I'm your boss and I just don't like.
Actually, if we're having a right to vote, we can.
And that's exactly what I would happen now.
Do that, but my opinion is that if someone puts a vote on today, someone seconds that vote, whether you like it or not, you don't overrule it, you don't throw it fit, you don't panic out until someone shuts it up. The real people who were elected, their titles and their vote, that's all I'm saying.
Any other discussion about this vote, I know it's. All in the seconded? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed, three to two, department heads' terms, including Chief Mitchum's, will be extended until December of 2024. Next is the certified local government update.
The HPC, I assume that's me, sorry, HPC will be on Tuesday and will be on.
Thank you. Next is the RQAW engineering plan. So, it's okay.
Thank you.
It's okay, so we had a meeting today with our QAW, so they, we, the council signed a task order for $10,000 for this engineering firm to do some work. At the golf course on 114, where we have drainage issues. And they submitted their overall construction estimate. And so today we went over that with Brett and Jess and John and also and Gina. And we understand, I think, a little bit of what they gave us, so for this project, there's three problem areas. The first one is where John has his property is. And he estimated, the engineer estimate would be $3,000 to fix that part. And then the second problem area is where the, like in the middle of the hole, where there's just drainage problems. And they estimated a 10-year, 10-year fix would be $35,000 about, and a 100-year fix would be $4,000. And then the last problem area is where the actual lake is. And these guys estimated a 10-year fix would be $32,000 and the 100-year fix would be $55,000. So all in all, it looks like this is gonna be about $100,000 to fix the hole. And so what their next step is to come up with an engineering. Sorry, let me get the right word here. It's called an engineering agreement and they would basically flush out exactly what goes, so that we can, we can put bids out for each one of those areas. Or possibly maybe Brett can actually fix some of it himself. So he's gonna come up with another agreement that's an estimate for us to put a bid out to fix all that. So that was done. The second part of the RQAW plan is, they are gonna take that second. So this first task order will cost $5,000, but we'll put $10,000 on the actual agreement. And so he's gonna come up with another task order to fix the signature hole, the local edges hole line. And so he's gonna come up with some engineering estimates to find out how much it's gonna cost to fix that hole so that people are safe when they come up and down and it doesn't ruin all of our golf courts. So that's the second part of the project. And then the third part is, Tim Ripberger asked these guys to come up with an engineering agreement for the water main and state moving on the line and John Street. And so they, he is, I think we should have all those agreements out in a week, so we can move forward doing the right thing with engineering and law. And that's kind of all I have there, but there's nothing for us to approve. Because we gave Gina the authority to approve those task orders, so when that one comes in, she'll be able to approve that one. Okay, next is the town attorney contract. So, should I keep this name? I guess I should, yeah, I'll keep the name. Should I say the name? Anyway, we met with an attorney at our decorative session and he's come up with a contract for us. I think it's basically pretty much just like the one Len gave us. There is a clause in here that both he and us, we can terminate. Attorney shall commence services effective June 16th and shall continue until terminated, but even if already, then, um, the 30 days written notice, so this isn't a contract, like a year contract, it's just whenever somebody wants to terminate. And the cost per hour is $250. And trial time to have the attorney shall be billed at an hourly rate of $250 for a long way trip, just not, I'm not sure. So he will be able to attend our meetings, but his availability is limited to the first and third Monday. So he initially said either the first and third Monday or the first and third Wednesday and he said that that first and third Wednesday is disallowed available, so. The only time he has is the first and third Monday, and that means we would have to move our council meetings. Yes, it's on page 212, attend very, he would attend very early scheduled meetings of the town council, first and third Monday of the month. Unless we tell him, if he attends, it's not necessary.
Do you want a motion?
I would answer a motion.
Make a motion, we are, the attorney, we interview.
John, the motion fired, is there a second? All second, the motion, I feel like we should. Do we need to wait till check, as well?
Do you need to vote? Yeah. Take it up before discussion.
Uh, pardon me.
So, John made a motion to approve the attorney contract and I seconded the motion.
I'm sorry, did?
John made a motion to approve the attorney contract and I seconded the motion. Did, I just wanted to read the terms of the contract. Did you mention it's okay?
I looked at the word and, you know.
Okay, so I just want to point out that he talks about page 12. That he would attend the scheduled, regularly scheduled meetings, but it'd be the first and third Monday of the month. It's the only time he has a day or so.
So I was questioning.
Yeah.
During the executive meeting, he told us he cannot come up the second day of the week we need. So how, how did contact you say that he does?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
During the executive meeting that we had to sit for over an hour talking to this guy, he said that he didn't know, well, first or third Monday, Tuesday, whatever day of the week that he could do it. So when did he decide he could do it?
Uh, when did he decide? I guess.
Is that night? He said he couldn't do it.
He said he didn't know. He said he worked day cycle.
I know, and he got his phone out and started going through it. He could not, he said he could do a Tuesday or Thursday or stuff like that.
He said, he said that he had to go look at his calendar and that he would get back with us for that. That he would do.
And he also said he had to talk to his wife.
Yeah, yeah, he had to talk to his wife.
So I said, hey, whatever you figure out, can you just send it to us? So I have something to sign and present to the council when we're, when we come together. And so this is what he sent.
So shouldn't he send this to all of us?
I forwarded, as soon as I forwarded this to Gina, for her to, now. I don't know if he has, I don't know if he had our info to take it to.
And this is only attorney we had to go vote on or not? I think that you have more than one because it's left, John.
Well, this was the one that Len recommended. And so we talked to him and nobody said anything about finding another one. So I didn't, I mean, did you look for any others or? I mean, I didn't, I didn't, we wanted to choose because it's just, we need someone right now. And he's available right now.
We still haven't engaged with attorney's opinion for a general counsel. This council is not.
More specific.
More expensive, but they, they also are a large firm and give us quicker advice. And we've been six months with our current attorney and the advice has been lacking. And we're, we're going off since May, April, it's been unfinished business. If you ask for, for attorney's opinions on it, we're still yet to receive them. So I, I agree with all of you that you can put it, especially if it's the guy that she or amended to at least consider one person last time.
She can't, she got ill.
We're not saying that she, she is, but I'm just saying that we will interview one person last time and we're requesting attorney. I think it would be a bit of us just to take, you guys have caution, you know, getting the right attorney's opinion tonight, but we're ready to jump in with the first person we interview. So I think we should just look for someone else, maybe put it out there. To other local attorneys who aren't paying charges, they drive from Lawrenceburg. We can put an allowance for a driver. I think that doesn't make sense. We could look at maybe doing, both McKinney offer Zoom options to, to be present at this.
I really, I really think that we need someone physically here with all the problems that we have. I, I really think it's a good idea as, as this council moves forward and gets to know how we're working as a team. I think that we need someone physically here. And I thought that the hard way without one year, I think it was not a good idea, but we tried it, it didn't work. I think we really need someone here. Those McKinney charges $450 an hour. I think that this attorney is a hundred dollars less than what they was charging. And I, I don't say there's why we can't charge this attorney out because he's available now. I mean, nobody took any action from Len, so she was not going to help us to go find an attorney.
But Sid also told you that till July 4th?
And, and Curtis Chuck didn't even come to the executive session, so we're very concerned about it.
She did tell us in her original interview that she will not be making all meetings.
No, no, I know.
And I'm just saying in terms for her, so it's not like it was unexpected.
No.
We do, and she will not even.
I apologize. I meant to say, I apologize. We didn't need someone here. And I, that's why I thought we were going to be fine. But I thought the hard way, we did need someone.
I was just going to add, I mean, you do run into troubles, but there's time. We're really nice to have one here. We went, we are, uh, in January. So we've been five, six months now without a attorney person. I think we could, um, top of the weeks, maybe try to find someone else, just so we can have some comparison.
So let me just ask you first, when you hired Grant Reese, did you guys do a lot of interviews with a lot of lawyers around here? I mean, how many did you do that? Yeah. You know, Tammy was, was not, hold on, but this.
Yeah.
Was it a lot?
I don't know.
Do you remember how many you did?
Was it more than one?
What's that?
Was it more than one?
I'm not sure.
I think that you have at least two to compare from, I mean.
I think the way the contract is written, that we can knock down any time. So while you guys are looking for another attorney option, we can have an attorney to answer some of the questions that's come up tonight. And if you don't like it, then you can say no by three, two, vote. How can we act?
Just for, we already have an attorney till July 1st and we already are engaged to set up a attorney for facts that they.
What's the harm in this, Chris, to, let's say, tonight? If, if you don't like it, you go ahead and look for the.
The last two meetings that you have, you guys, what's the harm of waiting on the week? What's the harm of waiting on, what's the harm of waiting on the week? And just to echo your.
Well, we certainly see that tonight where we need legal counsel now. And I will go up to maybe ask this attorney to pay $450 an hour for them to answer these questions. We can hire a guy and get, get it for $250 an hour. And if we don't like it, we can say, you are terminated, you go look for somebody else. Or you can continue to look for somebody else. And then if that person is better than this person, hey, we can vote for it. But let's have an attorney now because we have a lot of questions for it just out of this.
But before he even gets to the building here, it's 500 bucks. It's $250 one hour each way. Then you're going to have another hour to three hours on top of that. So you're talking over a thousand dollars twice a month.
There are local attorneys, not necessarily in our field that specialize in this full law.
Well, we, no, no, fine, go, John. I want to hear an attorney tonight to help us out with things that are going on tonight.
We do have an attorney tonight. We have an attorney July 1st and then we have an engagement letter that they slew of attorneys that couldn't have, because we have a pressing issue. So, I mean, you have a motion, you have a second, you have a discussion, call the.
Yes, ma'am. Can you just speak for two minutes?
$450 is a lot for one person to make. Why don't you just get him wired up to do a Zoom and give him $100 every time you have to refer to him?
It'd be nice for that.
I mean, Zoom would help. Does anybody else? I mean, you don't spend $450 for an attorney that.
But if the $450 is for a Zoom meeting.
What did you say?
The, the attorneys that he's wanting, it's a Zoom meeting and it's $450.
Was it Zoom? I didn't hear that. Is that what it is out of Lawrenceburg?
No, no, out of it. The Lawrenceburg is $250 and it's a long way to build a $250.
But not Zoom.
Zoom option would be if you would use those, that's, that's the assumption.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not necessarily accurate assumption. When we talked to those about this, they had offered a lower rate to be a permanent attorney in between rank and tenure. So we did talk to multiple attorney, talked to those. They had recommended other people's ranks rates and she was, she was one of those.
So just as a reminder, the town count, the town, the town paid $24,000 in 2020 for attorney fees. The following year, 2021, the town paid $26,000 in attorney fees. So that's about two, two, $2,000 a month. So these fees are very, I think, on a lower scale. I think it's reasonable for $2,000 a month. In the year 2022, actually, all the call, the town paid $64,000. We paid Grant Reese $18,000 to pay our local attorney. But we also paid those McKinney to handle local matters as well. So we actually paid about 20, 30, $32,000 to handle local issues in 2022. So that's way below the, the 2,000 or maybe 25,000 that he's, he's saying that on us. So I think relatively speaking, this is definitely on the lower hand of, of what's been happening. Or what, what we could be involved in.
I just spoke my opinion. I think we need more than one to compare. And we're under contract with them until July 1st.
Leah's been out of the net for the past couple of weeks and she'll continue to be out of the net for the next week because she's still. I'm sorry, did, did somebody make a motion and second?
John, you second.
To approve, sorry. I'm so sorry. Um, so John made a motion to approve the contract and I seconded all of the other. All of those? Okay, motion failed. No attorney contract. So is anybody going to take a leave then and try to find a new, new attorney? Or just going to do, because at our next meeting, we won't have an attorney?
Well, thank you for the bond for attorney.
Okay.
So we're not going to have an attorney in the next meeting.
We could call special meetings like you want to do from the other side.
A special meeting for?
For attorney. For attorney.
Okay, to, to approve the contract.
For each, yes.
Do you have an executive session too?
Yeah, we have an executive session first to, to interview the person. And if only the three of us show up again, basically, there's the three of us to figure out which one's better. Sounds good, Chris, that's one. Next is the Don and Julia.
Um, Tim did look over this and said they can talk about possibly, okay, sorry. They had an existing garage in the Riddick house. They're replacing an existing garage. However, they're adding another gang, so it's going from a two to a three car garage. Um, they thought about an option of making an apartment upstairs. So Tim said as long as it was known, R3, they would be able to do that, so that is how it's sold. Um, he said that it needs all the setbacks, so there isn't any issues on our end.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'm sorry. John made a motion to approve, Chris is second. Does it have the dimensions of this thing? It doesn't, but.
Yeah, it's on a very low space. 139 by 26.
But he wrote the blueprints, I think it was, so I could make copies of it. He did say make a live time version, but not those second, so.
I'm sorry, what does it say? It says 39 by 26?
39 feet by 36 feet.
30, 39 by 36, um, garage.
Tim didn't say it was okay yet.
I'm sorry.
Tim didn't say it was okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, he is concerned as being a partner, if they were going to put an apartment up there. So that was concerned on how it was sold, but after he looked it up, he said that it was fine.
So they have to deliver to the agency.
Yes.
Um, all in favor? All of those, do it again. Next is the election of many monsters.
He says the Republican motion would just pass tonight, three to. I made a motion to elect Earl Moore as the president for the remaining cabinet, going through every year.
Is there a second?
I'm shaking in motion.
Uh, first, we made a motion to elect Earl Moore and she has seconded to make Earl Moore the president and she has seconded all of you. I mean, sorry, any discussion? All of you? All of those? Motion passed. Earl is the mini president, but won't take over until the rest of the law, right?
I made a motion to elect John Campbell as vice president.
First, we made a motion to elect Chuck Campbell as the vice president. Is there a second?
I'll flick it.
Earl Moore seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All of those, motion passed? Oh, sorry, I opposed them all.
Are, are the people that are close to a decision or they want to vote?
I can't do.
Are the people that are going for a decision a lot of the?
Yes, they just can't. Motion for the next House. Anyway, we're talking to Dave. Next is the Hines Street growth of the asset class. I don't want to keep you to ten minutes, but I really liked it, Nancy. Because we present it now. Do that, you're great. Thank you.
So it means today, he's a good representative of Brookville. Um, 20 to the minutes of December 20th to 2022, that I would be accountable with the number of rocks that will be purchased and locations of the later date. So this is the part of that for, um, as far as hydrates versus. The picture that I have, give everyone a piece of hydrate that you purchased. We purchased a total of 10 hydrates. And right now, I, we are working, Hines is working on the locations.
Thank you. Give them the other. Next is Amanda Custer.
I just wanted to get the approval to be able to set up my share, I share on town lots. I'm looking at committee of the Coolaw and the Old Roseberg Farm Lot. Amanda and I talked about setting up the pool. I thought it was a great idea. Um, we also had some discussion about possibly trying to do like a food truck event, maybe in the summer and then another one in the fall, depending on how the summer event goes. Um, Harrison does it in Hamilton. There's a lot of surrounding communities that do food truck events. We have a couple of in town and plus hers. I, I thought it'd be great.
So do we, uh, sorry, which way to lawyer, is there any ordinance? Since.
We don't, we don't have ordinance. Um, we do, we have a solicitor's permit, I guess, what's it called? Um, so typically they would fill that out as long as, if they were selling food, as long as they had a permit from the health department, um, that they were supposed to go. So I did, Gina and I looked up some ordinances in surrounding communities to see what that looked like. But that's what we've done for, I don't know, but there's just a solicitor's permit debate.
It's a $25, one time a year, $10 annual fee.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we have food truck, there's the past setup in the school lots, um, or in the park. Um, maybe a paid fee or employee fee. Maybe approved, the gentleman there set up a food truck in the farm's market, he had set up. Paul Johnson set up their, their truck, the board, the vessel, he set up in the park, you know, the lot, so it's. There's no limits of restrictions, stricts it, set up that they, you have to hear solicitor.
So, does that mean that we allow her to, to set up on the town lot? Does that mean she can start any, any food truck to be on any town lot at any time? Or is this just a? Or is this just a, is it one, maybe it's an area?
They would have to apply just that she would, um, they couldn't just set up without, you know, this is how filling up that future.
But the solicitor's permit is, is just if she has a truck, right? We just need that to sell within town limits.
Right.
The ability to set up on this lot is what we're talking about right now, right? So is that just a first certain dates or certain times, or is this just cart launch?
Any? Yeah, just a lot of this will come in too, so. Basically equal shade, so it would be seasonal.
Sure. But if we give this approval, is that she can set up like an Easter parking lot on Tuesday and a pool lot? I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the relevant requirements of what we're allowing to do.
As, as it stands now, I mean, there's nothing that restricts her from setting up. We don't have ordinance that would restrict anybody from setting up if they have a solicitor's permit.
I thought you said we had to.
It's not a property, it would be just like anybody else asking you, like the elders in the fields, it still need permission with dates, that way we know what's happening, when, give to somebody, so, so I think it'd be ideal just to kind of cause that, so that we know when they have.
Anywhere to set up? That, that sounds reasonable, so do you know when and where?
Uh, yes, big question. I can, is there, could I give a, like a notice or like a long beach notice for something? And then something like, you know, like where, like the dates and the locations?
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds, does it, does that sound okay to you?
We talked, we did talk about, uh, the pool has a couple of free days. Yeah. Churches and, and different, uh, organizations have free days in the pool. So I thought maybe that would be, um, a good, I don't know, one of, one of the good times to come, like, I'm more than happy to, to work with Amanda, I'm using that, um, when she's gonna set up.
I would kind of make a motion, uh, that we authorize Jess, or we give permission for Jess to authorize use of the town park lot or the schools or people who have proper permits until for the rest of the years. During, I got just made, during food truck, food truck, and there goes the proper permits.
First, make a motion to get Jess approval to give proper permits with dates and locations, with limited dates and locations, not with, um, with a proper permit, John second. Uh, that's her decision, so.
Jess, would you be okay with doing that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I thought she just said that, I'm sorry.
They're doing a lot of the work, but as long as they can just give me the dates and stuff, I'm, I'm more than happy to do that. I think that a food truck, but, um, I think that's a great idea.
Uh, any more submission? All favor? All opposed? Motion passed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Uh, okay, that's it for the agenda. Um, I just have a couple things that I've kind of, that I related about, uh, presenting the Haines Street grant, today was our, um, bid, uh, bidding meeting, and we had two general contractors come, uh, so that's really news. And so hopefully they will submit their bids, um, and all the bids are ready by James Miami at 10 a.m. and we'll open the bids at the town municipal meeting. And as we're into the public, anyone that would like to come. Um, I wanted to ask about, did the town board team get together to talk about signage?
No.
Okay. Uh, next is, uh, last time we approved our initial photos. So we're now looking at, um, nailing that date for the weekend of July 10th. So hopefully we'll get that scheduled soon.
I had some discussion about that. Been sparking my attention there. Please permit. I think they need some Class A's for funerals and photo ops and things that they don't have.
I'm sorry, we need.
Class A uniforms, dress uniforms? And I don't believe that they have that currently.
I can't hear, but.
Police Department does not have Class A dress uniforms currently. No. That matches. No.
I believe that they should have them for funerals and photo ops and different situations.
They switched the uniforms over five years ago, as you know, because of the blue. All the blues that were coming in, you buy a blue, they wear a pair of pants, they wash it two or three times, shirt or whatever you wore, the color's different. So five years ago, switched it all to black. So we haven't had the opportunity to, uh, well, we do have the opportunity, uh, but if you guys approve me to go ahead and order Class A's for such things, I'll, I'll go ahead and dig that, put it in place. I would say you're looking at roughly 400 to 700 dollars for the whole uniform. Just ballpark here, but I'll get it, put it together, and if you guys are okay with that, I'll, I'll work with Class A's.
400, 700 per officer, correct?
Yes. By the time you buy all the equipment, you gotta get another gun belt that has to be the shiny portion, you gotta get the ties, the buttons, the whistles. It's just one of those uniforms that everybody wore all the time, it looked nice, people liked it. I got that. We're moving away from that this, uh, in the last several years for the working function of a uniform. You see what the officers are wearing, it's, it's, it's just a working uniform. Uh, I just didn't know we could, with everything I was looking at over the last four or five years, if I thought if I came to the board to ask for that kind of money for every officer, where I'm looking at other equipment, I just put the equipment before the, that particular uniform. But I'm okay with ordering if you guys, uh, want me to do that. So, uh, sorry, excuse me. So, uh, right now, will you attend to those? Are you guys just ordering uniforms? We, we don't attend to those unless it's one of our hall ops or order firefighter or someone in our EMS or something of that nature. All right, I will be on that. What, what do you order then? We would just use, uh, wear our regular uniforms, some people do, uh, some would wear Class A, and I'm totally not against Class A uniform. We just switched over that five years ago, uh, because everybody was getting away from, and all the departments are getting away from the Class A uniform, but they do buy a Class A uniform for those particular reasons. I, I totally agree with you.
Do you want to make a motion to approve that or?
I don't know, you, you can make a motion whether you want, I just don't have any motion. I mean, we don't have a dollar or anything to approve yet, so I'm not sure.
I'd like to have it before you do photo ops, while getting to.
Oh, okay.
Picture your, in your, in your picture.
We've been putting those up for a long time.
What's the spending on, on our end?
Three, no, 3,000, I think, I believe.
So we have a little bit, exactly 3,000. We know your budget from last year, I think every year we have to put a uniform, budgets and different equipment. You got up to 3,000 discretionary funds, so we can put some of the view.
Jesus, do I still have 3,000 in my budget?
He's talking about your purchase limit is 3,000.
Okay.
So we can talk about that, but how much are they gonna be? You have to give me a figure.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'll do that, I'll get it together within a week. I don't know what I have left since we hired two officers back, or then we hired two new officers buying their equipment, the vest, I don't know where I'm at with all that, so.
I'd say.
He was just talking about the purchase limit goes 3,000.
Oh, you're talking about my, okay, uh.
You think it's gonna be more than that?
You'd have to.
You think it's gonna be more than that, 3,000? Then you wouldn't have that condition.
Okay, so if it's 3,000 and less, you give me permission, it's all right for me to do it, I'll get with that.
Can you wait for, for our customer?
Her qualities.
Okay, sorry, just wanted to do this. So the next is the sewer surveys. So, um, I had, um, gotten all the sewer surveys that are right here. Um, there's a bunch of them. I guess I'll give this to the new president to take care of. Um, these are, uh, I think we've got 47 out of 223, um, surveys back from the hill. And, um, I was gonna compile them and send them out to the public, uh, but we've gotten lots of questions around one of our team members, um, to get their emails on the surface, so I just thought I'd give that to the team. And it's, oh, wait, you're not on the team though, but these two are. Do you want, do you want me to give those to the team? Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, for them to compile and get out to the public. Um, my concern with the request for information from one of the team members is that, um, there are private emails on the surveys that I personally would not like to divulge to the public, um, because I believe that's personal information.
If you had a attorney, would you ask that attorney?
Thank you, John. You're absolutely right.
Well, we had a chance to have, we're not.
Uh, so I just caution, uh, the team, uh, to be careful with those email addresses because those people did not know that, that they would be, um, giving that email address of their personal information to the public. So that's why I just caution you guys from actually publicizing every single one of those.
The Indian House has a motion, free opinions on free information requests. If there's a concern about what can be not be read after it's a free service, it will have to rush in to the attorney's fees. There are, there are ways to get our, our legal questions answered through the state. Gina, has that, have you marked all those received? You have a copy of the file at the clerk's office?
They weren't received to me, no.
Okay.
They were sent to Jess.
They need to be, they need to be submitted and marked received by the clerk because they are part of a government entity and they are a part of to, uh, government level of request. Someone requesting, you have to, you have to comply with that, so someone needs to ask public access counselor what their things otherwise this or that office is in violation of free information request.
I think I would just use that for private information, um, of course I would check.
So I think those need to go back to Gina's office to be marked received, made a copy, and then someone other than Gina or Jess or Bridget, since you're still a presiding officer, needs to ask the public access counselor.
Thank you. Um, one last thing, is John, did you want to say anything about the one-way signs on the 4th street intersection?
The state put up one way, uh, no turn on red signs at 4th street sides of the intersections because there's a delayed left turn only signal. And I personally, I got sides wiped because I was turning right on red and the people coming across, they had the green arrow, I did not know it. So I asked the state to do that. So anybody who's made it to get turned right on red on 4th street, make it.
And they also, John, put up signs on there and said, don't turn left on the right sides, don't turn right.
Oh, that's good.
One sign each, so that's good. That's all I have. Do you guys have anything to?
I have nothing.
Anything else? Do you have any?
No names.
I think you guys, um, sorry, I'm starting to, I did send an email to the parks, I don't know what we're calling that, made to the park for the sign. Oh. I did try, uh, attempt to set that up, but I got zero response. So I'll try again tomorrow. Interesting. Take that. Um, Gina, do you have anything else? Do you have anything? I'm sorry, for a bit. Oh, Gina has.
Just real quick, uh, nobody said anything about a date after the historic preservation special meeting. So do you want to set a date for, uh, the council special meeting after their meeting? Which I guess the earliest could be Wednesday next week.
When, when is there?
Tuesday.
We can do it Tuesday night. Why don't we have a joint session?
5:30 is typically.
So it's Tuesday maybe?
I'm sorry.
Definitely, we can.
I can't make it. I have, I have already done one of the meetings six to the liberty.
Tuesday?
We can't do Tuesday.
Why? It's a holiday, you know?
Monday's a holiday, it's the 19th, it's June 10th.
Is Monday a holiday for us?
Yes.
No.
So I can do it Wednesday or Thursday. Or you guys have a, Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday, 7:00?
Does anybody have a, Wednesday 7? Okay, so special meeting is Wednesday 7, um, to approve the new map.
Do you want to just have it in the town building? Cause I don't know this.
That'd be great.
Motion to advertise Wednesday 7:00 in town.
Okay.
All favor? All opposed, motion passed? Okay. Thanks, Gina. Anything else, Gina?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So that's Gina's 21st. And so, okay, public comments. Thank you so much for your patience.
Um, I just have three really comments I want to make. One is that it's a reiteration that on the 4th street and historic map, then I just want to reiterate that the, the native folks on the street want to be in it, they can be in it, they cannot be in it. And that we should, the rest of us should not be held to that just because we have few, very few, who do want to be in it. So just wanted to reiterate, they want to be in it, that's wonderful, I give them full support, um, but they can be in it, you know, the rest of us are very happy as we are. The second thing I wanted to ask is, there was a discussion about, um, extending the contracts for some folks until about 2024. Uh, and just had, um, these contracts going extended. But is there a religion there that says, you know, to the effect, they will keep their position as long as they are performing their duties? Not just absolutely, you're going to be having this job until 2024. There should be some argument to that, if they screw up or they don't do their job fulfilling, but they still can be dismissed.
Uh, I don't think we have any arguments like that. We have, uh, we have a employee handbook, the county government's, the duties and performance of the employees, and in that handbook, it says that employees are not, so we can fire them with a majority vote with the council at any, at any time, uh, with our cost of employees, but, but not for the change of voice. So there's, the, the, the employee handbook helps us go.
And then the third thing I want to say is that, I think the travesty of all the town board is my voting, Bridget, oh, I was going to say, she's done a phenomenal job with, while she's had to work with, with all the resistance from some town board members. Uh, she's, she doesn't just take things at face value, she digs into them and finds out what the real scoop is. Uh, so I, fortunately, I'm just fascinated, and I think that we are going back to a town board that we didn't like last year, and I'm glad we're in that this year. Uh, Bridget, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you for your kindness. Uh, any further comments? I will entertain a motion to, uh, chair. Chair, your motion to chair, Johnson, all favor? All opposed?